Good morning, welcome to the March 23rd, 2010 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, I would ask that we have the roll call, Roberta.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Long and Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Great, and I'm chairing as vice chair for the absence of a supervisor and our chair, Kathy Long. At this time, we have the pleasure of having a moment of inspiration from one of my favorite inspiring people for what she does, Lisa Saffinelli, and she's with the Westminster Free Clinic. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, thank you so much for coming this morning.
Thank you. Members of the board, Chair Willynne Parks, CEO Marty Robinson, thank you so much for this opportunity to give you a few words of inspiration and good morning. As we move forward in the next few years with healthcare reform, which will help a few more of our citizens and especially those with preconditions, I would like to tell you a few stories about the amazing things going on in our own county and both for medical people volunteering as well as students who are giving their time here in the community and to tell you a few of the stories of life, of lives being changed. At Westminster Free Clinic, over 70 high school students volunteer alongside medical professionals. They donate their time for over two years and half of our students are, over half of our students are minorities and low income. And the students, the stories I'm going to tell you today are about our minority students because they have so many challenges in addition to just in reaching their goals. And these stories are actually quite common and not so unique anymore. So I could tell you many, many just like this. We have a girl named Jessica who came to our clinic with much prodding from her sister, who is now a senior at Stanford, who interned at our clinic a number of years ago. Her goals in life were to graduate from high school and get married and have a family. And her sister suggested she come volunteer at the clinic and help her parents, who are patients at our clinic, as well as many others in the community, and give back to her community. And in the process, Jessica has moved up through the ranks, has been mentored by our physicians and nurses, and has become our most outstanding student manager this year, and has decided she wants to become a nurse practitioner and just got into the University of San Francisco's program and will be going there in the fall. So we're very excited for her. And a very similar story, Rigoberto came to us a number of years ago as a typical macho high school student and didn't really have many goals for his life, and he became inspired to be a doctor. And he went to Moore Park College, then to Westmont, and he this fall got into the medical school program at Stanford. So Stanford has been very good to our students and they're able to financially, of course, help support our students in reaching their goals. And it's just really an amazing thing. In the case of Yvette and Jessica, their parents were factory workers in Newbury Park who got laid off a number of years ago, a couple of years ago, and are still unemployed, kind of struggling between being caregivers and trying to find other jobs. Their parents speak limited English and yet they're brilliant, they have brilliant daughters, and they're now going to be great contributors to our county in the years to come. And students like Jessica and Yvette and Rigoberto have already had the experience of giving back to their community and seeing how great that feels. For example, Jessica just finished helping with a community outreach where one of our current patients was identified, he was a dad who thought he needed glasses, he was having a lot of trouble seeing, and through our outreach screening, he found out that he had very, very high blood sugar, had not been to a doctor in years, and was losing his vision. And now, through our clinic, he is able to see a doctor regularly, gets free labs, free meds, we give him glucose test strips, he has health education, his blood sugars are under control, and he is now able to work and care for his young children and wife and provide food and shelter for his family instead of losing his sight and going blind. Another typical story our students get to see is we had a mother who was 36 who was diagnosed early with breast cancer. And through our case manager and early mammogram we were able to provide her with, she was able to get into an early breast cancer treatment program and is, as a single mother, now able to be alive to take care of her daughter and raise her. So these are the kind of stories our students get to see every day and be a part of and feel like, wow, we can really make a difference in our community. The tobacco settlement funds that you provide to Westminster Free Clinic offer life-changing outcomes that alter the future of high school students and families and individual patients and benefit our county as a whole in a multitude of ways, and I know you guys know that. And with the small amount of funds, doctors, pharmacists, physical therapists, nurses, wonderful people in our community who are practicing in their private offices and can't see the uninsured there are able to give back and make a difference for people who don't have access to healthcare in very, very meaningful ways with just a small financial contribution. These professionals donate over a million dollars of their time and care every year by being able to have the few medical supplies and resources they need to be able to volunteer, which is worth more, worth even more to the students and patients that they're mentoring and serving. So it's kind of a domino effect. One reason we can hope for our future and for Ventura County is because we have so many caring high school students and adults from all different economical, economic levels and ethnic backgrounds working together to make a difference for families struggling economically and make sure they have early access to healthcare. It's very, very inspiring and exciting to see the difference people can make here in our county, and we thank you for being a part of that. Have a good day.
Okay. Number one, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing for the people and what you're doing for those young people in terms of changing their lives. You know, here in the West County, if we wanted to bring students down, not to become long-term volunteers because the distance is just too great, but to just observe and see a night or two.
Anytime.
Okay, and which nights are you?
The night in Chicago is Wednesday night, that's when we have our full clinic, and 35 of our students will be volunteering at a time, so we split the group into two groups. And they're in their blue scrubs and they're in full action the whole night, they're a part of our medical team.
And what are the times?
We open our doors at 5:00 to start checking in patients, and we're there until at least 10:00 at night, the students are as well. But I would recommend them coming between 5:30 and 6:00 because all the patients are checked, and we're seeing over 100 patients in an evening.
Wow.
Yeah, and so anytime really between 6:00 and...
And could you give me that location again?
1000 East Janes Road, it's off the 23 and Janes. And it's, we actually, in order to absorb that many students and have seven physicians, physical therapists, everybody working at the same time, we operate out of the Methodist Church, yeah, Thousand Oaks Methodist Church, we actually, they let us, we have, they let us have medical records, they have set up a whole space for us. And then the students help us set up the whole clinic and tear it down at the end of the night, and so they're part of the whole process. And so you'll be able to see, I mean, it's really crowded and big and busy and doing a lot of good stuff.
What's the furthest, furthest distance students come?
Well, we have a couple of students from Calabasas and we have a student from Camarillo, so that's kind of the area. And the Calabasas students coming because their father's a physician, otherwise it's a Ventura County thing only. But if a doctor's willing to give their time, we let their child go. So, but yeah, it's, kids are from all over East County, from Sidney Valley, lots of patients and students from Sidney Valley all the way to, you know, Newbury Park, Wesley, Thousand Oaks being the majority.
Thank you. And age, and the age for the students?
The students are 15 to 18 years old.
They have to be at least 15?
Yes. So we've had a few that started as freshmen, but we typically prefer their sophomores.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Thank you for an excellent program. In fact, in my report, I want to mention something similar to what you're doing here in the West, in the West County, so I want to thank you for an excellent program.
Yeah, I think investing in our young people and doing something that's consistent long-term really can make a big difference.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Foy wants to come in?
I just, you know, I appreciate what you're doing so much, but it also just goes to show that as, from my standpoint, we don't always need government doing the things, it's the people coming out and caring about their fellow man, willing to do it, and all these volunteer hours and people, and I just appreciate what you've put together, what you've done, so.
Thank you. Thank you, and you do help us.
Absolutely, and it is, it's so inspiring, not only in the fact that you're there and helping a community that would otherwise get absolutely no medical care, but that you're bringing in these young people who may not otherwise ever go into any, you know, significant profession where they can make a good decent living and not end up being one of those people that get in the line, so that's just wonderful.
Thank you.
And then you didn't even mention, well, there's so much good to say about it, but that all these physicians are giving of their time and nurses, and it's absolutely remarkable what you have there, and unfortunately, because of the economy, your numbers have grown significantly, the number of people that need assistance, so it's so good that you are there.
Thank you, yeah, we've more than doubled this year in the demand for services, it's been amazing.
I assume you're happy that healthcare passed?
Always, it's movement in the right direction at least, there's a long ways to go, but it's very broken to some, and it's a good start.
And this certainly helps you though.
Yeah.
And I know Supervisor Bennett was interested in, you know, what other students might be interested in the program. As I recall, when my child was able, one of my kids were able to get in, the others couldn't, but you have like a waiting list of students that are just really wanting to get there and help, and we realize that the need is there, we need more of you or we need you to grow, so.
Yeah, we would love to help other it grow if that were ever something people...
It's a, it's a great model.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming this morning.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Thanks. At this time then, we'll go ahead and...
Madam Chair, I have a card.
You do? I don't have it. Roberta, do you have a card or someone? I'll take your word for it. Carol Dean, come on up here, and you're going to be speaking at the moment of inspiration, is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I want to quote page 228 from this court transcript, a point of order, Madam Chair. The Brown Act gives me the right to speak, and you didn't time the last speaker, she went six minutes. So our federal laws forbid discrimination, I'm asking, I will not take very long, but I'm asking you not to discriminate against me.
It's the chair's prerogative, and I'm going to hold you and everyone to those times.
Thank you for your discrimination of federal law. I will believe the truth however it comes. Page 228 of a court transcript certified, Russell Baker, Deputy Public Defender, quote, "It is clear by the prosecution, this case has been prosecuted. The fact of this prosecution is the result of years and years of Mr. Williams going to the Board of Supervisor meetings," unquote. Page 228. "An act of God is upon Ventura County. Do you believe the report? Ventura County Superior Court Judges Cloninger, Purnell, Haddon, Johnson, Bradley, Hunter, and Love. An act of God is upon Ventura County. Do you believe the report? Pestilence, a pest without pesticide. Criminal judges Cloninger, Purnell, Hunter, and Love. An act of God is upon Ventura County. Do you believe the report? Pestilence, a pest without pesticide. Civil judges Haddon, Johnson, and Bradley. An act of God is upon Ventura County. Do you believe the report? Pestilence, a pest without pesticide. A moment of inspiration will determine the outcome." Thank you, Madam Chair, you should have stopped my time, you're over there talking.
As I understand it, you have two minutes and 30 seconds, so...
Thirty, 31.
I thought it was 2:30.
I quit talking at 31, you took my word before.
I'll give you the one second.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, at this time then, we'll go ahead and do the minutes if I have a motion. We do have minutes in front of us of November, pardon me? Oh, the pledge. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. Marty, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the repel from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a review and justice for all.
Now the minutes. We have the minutes of November 3 before us.
Move the minutes.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. And would we all please vote? That motion passes unanimously, so we'll go right now to agenda review and Ms. Robinson.
Yes, Chair Parks. The agenda title only on item 14, the word wildlife should read wildfire. And time certain, agenda item 15, there's a request for a continuous to April 6 at 11:30 a.m. And on the regular agenda, item 24, there is a revised board letter, but it really deals with the financial section and the allocation of where revenue should go, so. All of those have been posted.
Do any of the board members wish to make any changes to the agenda? Okay, so we have a...
The item 15, continue to April 6 at 11:30. That's a Pyru area.
Bless me, thank you.
Okay, so with those changes, do we have a motion to approve the calendar or the agenda? Motion and a second, and we'll vote on those recommended changes. Okay, and that also passes unanimously, and now we'll go on to our consent agenda items 10 through 12.
Move the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second. And this is the hazardous materials discharge report and the general plan 2010 annual report.
Roberta?
Seeing that we have a motion pushed on the, here we go.
Oh, it's so nice, David.
And once again, a unanimous vote. We're on a roll, and that is our consent agenda items. Now we can go to our regular agenda. I feel like we've had public comment whenever Carol Dean speaks, so. We have two speakers, our first speaker is Cliff Williams with the California Highway Patrol. Good morning.
Good morning, supervisors, it's a pleasure to be here today. And as you might recall, one of the requirements for the California Highway Patrol commanders across the state is to visit their Board of Supervisors once per quarter, so of course, I always enjoy coming here, especially when I have good news to share. And I'm happy to report that the Moore Park CHP office covering eastern Ventura County is having an excellent year. And thus far, we have not had one single on-highway fatality this year. The last fatality we investigated on the highway was on Santa Rosa Road back in November in Supervisor Parks, you probably remember that one. So we're having a good year, and I wanted to share very briefly our statistics by the end of February. Besides having zero fatalities, our injury accidents are down by 39%. Total accidents are down by 20% compared to this time last year, and our DUI accidents are down by 48%, which is very significant because DUI is one of the top killers of people out on eastern Ventura County highways. Our DUI arrests are up slightly, but I also wanted to mention that the number of citations that we have written is actually down. So when accidents are down and citations are down, that only corresponds to the fact that people have finally noticed that there are more CHP officers in Ventura County and are slowing down accordingly. A couple of other notes, I have some excellent officers working with me. The good news is, three of them are going to be promoting to sergeant, the bad news, I'm going to be losing them. And for our supervisors in eastern Ventura County, you know Officer Dave Cajuara, and he's one of those individuals who's going to be promoting soon. I'm also happy to report that I have a new public information officer, and even though I cover eastern Ventura County and my partner, Captain James, covers the western side, this is going to be a new asset that we're going to share because my new public information officer is bilingual, and he will be available to speak anywhere in Ventura County where the need might present. And finally, I'm going to probably join all of you in lamenting the upcoming retirement of Butch Britt, my good friend in this county and somebody who I've come to respect in the almost five years that I've worked in Moore Park. What an excellent resource, very intelligent person, and I've always been amazed by, by all the facts that he can recall. I can barely remember what I did yesterday, but he can remember what was going on 15 years ago and plus. So I hope to see all of you at his retirement luncheon, which is going to be at the end of this month. Thank you very much for your time. I can answer any questions if there are any.
We'll be getting a West County report also?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Captain Williams. We'll miss Cajuara, Officer Cajuara, and I'm glad that he's being promoted, he's a really fine, another fine officer that you have under you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and so our next speaker is Captain Andy James.
Morning, everyone, thanks for allowing us to take five minutes, I think it is, of your time, that's... We'll see that in the sun tomorrow, sir. I dropped our, our hard statistics from 2009 last year off teaching your offices several weeks ago, so if you have any questions on those or for some reason didn't make it to your desk, call my office and I'll send you a copy of those. Year-to-date, we're looking really well, although we've had a couple fatalities, we're down about half from year-to-date, so one of the things, there's two things that we focus on, DUI, and of course, the summer's coming, so we're going to see a lot more of that increase, so I'll put another car on the night shift to enhance those efforts. And speed, speed seems to be the continuing problem, not only statewide but nationwide, countywide, citywide, so you'll see more and more of our officers on the sides of the road with a little thing in the hands, if you've seen that, that's LiDAR, that's the radars, the days gone by, we're now using LiDAR, so you'll see more and more of those out on the freeways, out on the unincorporated roads in the county. The fire season's coming up, we're going to be well aware of that. With that said, we've met with the county partners, the fire and the sheriff's department, we'll be having our annual meetings, get together, blow the dust off the operations plans to, you know, have good eyes and ears out there in those unincorporated areas and those fire districts. Captain Williams and myself recently met with our counterpart and the fire chief here in Ventura County, just to be sure that we all understand the importance of smooth operations. I think our friends to the north had an unfortunate incident where a member of the fire department was arrested at a scene, made it front-page news in the newspapers, so we've met to ensure that will not repeat its, that process down here in Ventura County. So our goal is to work in unison with you, fire, the constituents, and again, I extend each and every one of you, if you wish, contacting myself and come on out, and you or your staff and constituents in here that are interested in seeing what we do, we'll put you in a patrol car and send you out on a evening with one of our fine young officers to see what it is that we do out there for you, so. Any questions of me?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Are, you're talking about doing that light, are those around the unincorporated roads in the county?
Um, yes.
Would you be doing it on the freeways also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you'll be handheld outside of the car?
Yes, yes. Now, you didn't see them in the years gone by on the freeways because the radar was designed to get the fastest, heaviest moving vehicle, so you pointed to a pack of vehicles which you were, and it was hard to really discern which one that it was. With the LiDAR, it's one beam going out, and they can get a group of vehicles and zoom in on one particular vehicle, and it's very extremely accurate.
But the officer has to hand-hold it themselves?
They do.
So some increased risk for officers then on the side?
There is, and we've taken that under consideration, so the officers are taking in mind where they're standing on the side of the road, you'll see them not next to the roadway, behind their patrol car, perhaps an offset area in the center divider where they're not directly in traffic, so, yeah. But there, but no hiding, no behind bushes, it's absolutely wide out in the open, and that's what they're doing, yeah.
And in terms of the fatalities that we had, are we seeing them on the unincorporated roads or are we seeing them on the freeway?
Mostly in the unincorporated roads, and when you look at the statistics in Ventura County, I know the newspaper had an article a while back that indicated Ventura County was, was very high in problem fatalities, when in fact, when I looked at all 58 counties, we were the 16th most safest for fatalities, so the numbers were quite old on... So, the numbers were quite old on what we read. When you look at current numbers, it's actually safe to drive in Ventura County, if you will. But the majority of our problems are on the unincorporated roads. So, we'll be doing not only an enforcement component, but an education component out there as well, in Hispanic-speaking communities, back in the farm areas, working in conjunction with the farm labor, et cetera, with the bilingual program that Captain Williams discussed, try to get the word out there, so to speak.
And if you could do me a favor on your way out, if you could just stop by my office, drop off your cardigan, so we make sure we have all the current updated information for you.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair. Supervisor Bennett. Captain James, I want to thank you again for that excellent report. And I've seen the highway patrolmen underneath the overpasses, you know, and I thought it was a radar gun, but it's similar to that, it's for the speeders. So, I slowed down from 80 to 79, I think. But anyway, I just want to thank Officer Webb, too. He goes over to our MAC in El Rio and gives an excellent report to return that we have a MAC meeting on what is happening, what to look for in the community, and keep us apprised of what's happening. Additionally, on this Saturday, you know, we're going to have a car safety program over in Oxnard of a Gonzalez and Outlet Center, you know, with the highway patrol to share with the community how to take care of the, how to install or buckle down a car seat and so forth without any, asking for any driver's licenses or insurance or anything that's going to be detrimental to them. We just want them to go there and then make sure that they know how to tie down the car seats and so forth, and your people are working on that, too.
Yes, sir, yes.
So, that's going to be this Saturday, and I think it's from 1, 2, 3, and I can't remember the...
Right, but I mean, if there's others that come in late, if it takes longer, that's fine, too.
So, that's a good safety opportunities for residents. I want to thank you for that, too.
You're welcome, sir.
Well, thank you for coming, and we really appreciate these regular visits. All right, well, that concludes our public comment portion of the agenda, and we can now move on to board comments. Supervisor Floyd, do you have any?
Sure, I have a few. It's great also that when you have the highway patrol, you don't realize how integral part of the county and they're part of what they do, you know, between helping through fires and disasters and just regular road safety and so much else. I know out in east part of the county, the cities depend on them also to do some patrol and help in a lot of areas. Talking about law enforcement, I was reading some statistics that I saw here in Moore Park that our crime rate is down 10%. Kind of goes along with Cliff Williams was saying about traffic citation, everything else is down. It's good to hear, especially in tough times, you know. It's good to hear that things are going in some positive, positive ways. The other thing, too, is that, and Supervisor Parks may bring this up, that Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks were nominated for the 2010 Secretary of Defense Employer Support Freedom Awards, which is great to see, the employers of these areas that are really making a difference in helping support our troops and the people that have to go overseas to do that. So, it was good to see. And then also, as you might have read in the paper, the Reagan Library received a $15 million grant from the GE to help with their renovation and their 100th birthday anniversary that's coming up in 2011. So, there's a lot of good things going on. And I don't have anybody to adjourn from today, so that's wonderful. Thank you.
And Supervisor Sarah Benson?
Yes, and thank you so much. You know, I just want to share a couple of things following up with what Lifa said in the moment of inspiration. I met with the public affairs person for Kaiser Permanente, Mary Jarvis, and they have a program in Oxnard that they're starting, and it's called, and I hope I pronounced this correctly, the Hippocratic Oath Program, Circle Program for the doctors, the oath that the doctors take. And according to Mary from Kaiser, they're starting off with seventh and eighth graders to learn about medical careers and the availability of getting into the medical field. And again, they currently are working with Fremont Junior High School in Oxnard, and this is going to help the children, they're going to get mentored, they're going to be going out there to the doctors, to the clinics, to make sure that they can also understand what it is to have a proper diet, what it is to look at obesity and diabetes and et cetera, et cetera. So, they also have a student, I understand that they follow, that's already going into an internship program. So, those programs are happening here also in the western part of Ventura County. And Haydock is next, and they're going to continue on with the junior high school kids. And also, I met with Elizabeth Amire and Nancy Staley from Habitat for Humanity. They're looking at probably, hopefully, building a couple of homes in El Rio and Nylah Acres. And also, this, last Saturday, I attended the El Consilio Awards Ceremony. It was attended by well over 400-plus leaders here in Ventura County, and this is an award for outstanding Hispanic community leaders in Oxnard. And it was well-attended, and there's a lot of great honorees that are doing a great amount of work here for the, for the community. And also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of this individuals here in this list. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bennett, do you have comments?
I do, thank you very much. First, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Called two of them out, William Lawrence Pugh, U.S. Navy, survived by his wife Judith up in Ojai, and Virgil Roy Hester, U.S. Army Corps, and survived by his wife Opal and daughters in Ventura County. So, we're sorry to lose those two veterans. I would also like to point out a couple of things. One, Ventura County Sheriff's Department in Ojai, their substation, they've launched a new program that offers a convenient confidential drop box where Ojai Valley residents can deposit unused and expired pharmaceuticals to try to divert harmful drugs from the environment and from kids. And we certainly are seeing teenagers experimenting with virtually every kind of drug they can find out of somebody's medicine box. And so, we have a good, safe place in Ojai at the police department substation that can get those out of both the environment and out of kids' way. Prescriptions that are outdated, that are not effectively treating the symptoms they're intended for, and certainly teenagers have been very creative at being able to get in there. People have mistaken their prescriptions and taken the wrong ones, et cetera. So, we encourage everybody to do that. Police Department, normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Program's not intended for commercial use, and it's restricted. You can't mail things in, you can't put in batteries and trash and syringes. It's a place just for pharmaceutical drugs, but I think it's a good one for us to step up on. The other thing is, I had the real joy of attending the Kingdom Center, and Supervisor Long was also there, the Kingdom Center launch yesterday in the city of Ventura. And what a remarkable dream that has come true in Ventura, where a church that was focused exclusively on the homeless had this dream that they were going to do something, found a rundown motel in Ventura, went around and convinced other churches to all take one room in that hotel, and now you have outside of each room the name of a church and the most appropriately and warm and accepting kind of rooms there. And what happens is now a family is, homeless families put in that place, and that whole church is adopting that family to see how quickly they can get them moved on so that room becomes available to somebody else. It is a wonderful concept. It's one I support completely, and I encourage everybody else to support. It's the Kingdom Center, right down on Thompson, has taken an eyesore and a source of lots of problems for the city of Ventura and turned it into one more step in our 10-year plan to try to end homelessness. And so, I was happy that my partner and colleague, Supervisor Long, was there with me to help kick that event off, and we've tried to work on this. And we certainly need to recognize one of our employees, Gail, up in Supervisor Long's office, has been probably the leading charger on this, as she is a member of the Harbor Missionary Church. And you can just see how passionate she is and how much this has really created a sense of purpose for her in life as this thing kicked off. So, it was a wonderful event on Sunday. We wish them well, and this won't be the last time you'll hear about the Kingdom Center from us here on the dais. So, those two major things I wanted to point out. And then finally, this coming Saturday, for those people that are interested in buying backyard compost bins and rain barrels so you can capture rain, and you can also compost and decrease the amount of water that you're using, energy that you're using, pumping water by capturing rainwater, and also by composting, you can decrease your waste stream. They'll be on sale, and it's, my guess is these will go very fast. $40 for the rain barrels and $55 for the compost, and it's only as long as supplies last on that truckyard sale, and that's going to be here at the county government center. There's also going to be one for you EastEnders down in Moore Park at 7075 Campus Road, Moore Park at Moore Park College. But ours is going to be right here at the government center. I will be here buying as many as I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. And I'll just, my comments will be brief. First, starting off by wishing happy birthday to my assistant, Denise Castillo-Saw. Happy birthday, Denise. Also, I want to point out a couple of things in my district. Our Casa Cano MAC meeting last week, we presented certificates to dozens of people who went through the entire CERT program, so that was exciting. And also, they have established a neighborhood watch program. And those are two things in this community that had no formal organization, no homeowners' association, and as a result of the MAC, are now being able to do things that a lot of those residents have always wanted to do, so that's really nice to see. I also want to commend the sheriff's department. Also, last week, they picked up two suspects, or suspect in two bank robberies in the city of Thousand Oaks, so that was nice to see. And also, I was able to attend, representing the board, to the Professional Peace Officers' Association's Medal of Valor Awards Dinner at the Reagan Library, and that was very nice to see. Not only are professionals being recognized, but also some citizens who became heroes just because of acts of circumstance and their bravery, so that was very inspiring to hear also. With that, I will go ahead and close in honor of the people on my list. I have two people I'd like to call out. One is Charles Jackson, who is the father of the veterans representative that serves the East County, John Jackson, so we're really sorry to see his passing, as well as my appointee to the Aviation Advisory Committee, David Long, died, and that was kind of unexpected, and we're so sorry to see him. That's a big loss for our community. So, with that, that concludes my comments, and we'll go on to our regular scheduled agenda. And I think we begin with item number 20. Does that sound right? Yes, it does, good. Thank you, and we have Melanie Roy here from our behavioral health department. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Parks, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson, Melanie Boy, from the behavioral health department. Item 20 requests your approval and authorization for two recommendations. One is to increase our contract with Heritage Schools, Children's Mental Health Services for our residential treatment. And the second one is similarly, a increase in the contract for Millhouse Children's Services. Again, that's another residential treatment facility. In the Millhouse, for Millhouse, we had three children placed by HSA in probation, and of course, mental health is responsible for the mental health services associated with that. And Heritage Schools is actually a place that we prefer because they have lower rates and successful treatment plans, so the costs for that increase will be offset by decreases in other contracts.
Do we have any questions on this item or a motion? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I'll go ahead and second that, and we'll have the vote. Okay, thank you, Melanie. Our next item on the agenda, Steve, do you want to click yes?
Yes, I'll vote yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, for the next item, I know Brian Brennan on my staff, I just don't see him down here yet. I'm sorry, if we could jump over one.
Okay, so would you like to go to item 22 instead of item 21?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Hopefully, he's listening to that. We'll do it in just one second.
And we have a little BGEF pet.
Okay, great.
Thank you. So, item 22 then will be up, and this is the Director of Public Works who just walked out of the room. Okay. Then let's go to item 23. We can be versatile here. And this is a track map. Do we have staff for that? We do. So, we're going to do item 23 first because we have staff here for it.
Good morning, Chair Parks, member of the board. This is Robinson. I'm Phil Nelson with the Public Works Agency. This item is the approval of a final map for track 5755 in Miramonte area, just outside of Ojai. The tentative map was approved by your board in February of '08. The developers completed all of the conditions that were required as part of that tentative map, and this actually today will just finalize that map and direct staff to take the proper steps to have it recorded.
Do we have any questions on this item?
I don't have any questions, but I was not in favor of this conversion at the time. I'm still opposed to this conversion. I think this starts mobile home rent control certainly down the wrong path, and it's not in the best interest of our citizens, so I will continue to take that position, but I know it passed when the board was here last time, so I want to be consistent with my vote.
Can I ask the county council what happens if this doesn't pass?
Well, the problem is, this is a ministerial action, and if it is not passed, then undoubtedly the developer will sue and the county will lose.
Could you quit being so wishy-washy about?
Well, my concern is that we won't have the votes to pass it. I would ask that we continue this.
For one more week?
Can we continue it? Our next meeting isn't until April 6. Is there a concern with that?
No, you may continue it if you choose.
So, I would make a motion that we continue this item to April 6. Okay, before we have the vote, let's go ahead and hear from the public. I have a card from Mr. Sid Goldstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Sid Goldstein. I'm the project engineer, and I was before the board when they approved the tentative map. My only comment actually refers to a letter that I have that I'd like to pass in from the law firm of Gilchrist and Rutter. They represent the ownership, and it indicates, as your county attorney just pointed out, that this is not a discretionary item. The tentative map has been approved. We complied fully with all the requirements of that tentative map. Your only obligation at this point is to allow the passing and approval and eventual recording of the final map consistent with that tentative map approval. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the process, but I would like to pass in this letter from the attorney.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the speaker? Not seeing any. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
At this time, then, the motion on the floor is to continue to April 6. Is there a second to the motion?
If I can ask real quick, what is the, you're saying you don't think there's enough votes to pass, that we get sued, so what's going to make the difference when the longest year?
We'll find out. Stay tuned. So, the motion then is to continue until April 6. There is no second to the motion?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, it's not showing on my screen. All right, so shall we all vote then? And the motion passes 3 to 1 to continue. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, we'll go back then. Brian Brennan is in the room, so let's go to item 21. And Ms. Camacho.
Good morning, board members. For the record, my name is Norma Camacho, Director of the Watership Protection District, and we are here today to approve the sale of approximately 125,000 cubic yards of film material to security paving. This material is going to be used by security paving for construction of the Rice Road interchange. A total of 250,000... A total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue will be generated from this transaction, and this revenue will be split fifty-fifty between the Rogers Family Trust and the district. Basically, in approximately 2006, we established an agreement with the family trust to split the revenues for the sale of the material in exchange for storing the material on their property. Real estate has, division has determined at this point that two dollars per cubic yard is a fair market value of the material at this point in time. Security paving will be responsible for obtaining all of the permits for the project and will also be responsible for transporting the fill material from the Rogers Family Trust property to the job site. At this time, if the board has any questions on the agreement, Keith Felagar of Real Estate Services is here to answer those questions as well as myself.
Are there any questions Supervisor Troy?
So we're splitting the two fifty between the trust and who's the other? The district?
And the district, yes.
Watershed?
Yes. And so that'll be going back to our zone funds.
Are we the one who put the material on there?
Yes. This material was a result of the cleanout of the Cayegus Creek, and so it's helping to offset the O and L costs associated with that.
Great. As long as we're getting the money back, that's good.
Yes.
A good arrangement. Any questions Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Supervisor Zaragoza and I both serve on Beacon Beach Erosion and Control. That has been a very effective organization unlike, I shouldn't say unlike, but there is the possibility to confuse it with another beacon that is out there, which is also a very effective organization, we've seen in terms of things that they've done. But this is a beacon, for those of us that aren't familiar with it, is Santa Barbara County, Ventura County, the cities of Oxnard and Ventura, Carpinteria at Santa Barbara, Port Weneme, and now the newly formed city of Galita. It's a joint powers agreement. It has been very effective at lobbying for beach issues that are consistent for all of us, and certainly if there's any greater evidence that we're all tied together, just watch the littoral cell rip the sediment off the beaches from Santa Barbara all the way down, and then deposit all of it in Oxnard, and then we sit there and try to plow it off of the homes and all of that. So we've worked on a number of issues, and Beacon has for a long time had an interest in trying to have this sediment, when it is pulled out, be put into this littoral cell to be deposited, because we do have a beach erosion problem, because we have lots of artificial traps for the sediment getting down. Fortunately, we have a very talented person who serves on the Ventura City Council, also part-time on my staff, but he's also the executive director of Beacon, and he's going to speak to this a little bit, and I'd like to have him sort of speak to an alternative way, just to get it on our radar screen, not trying to stop this right now, but just to get it for all of us on our radar screen, an alternative way for us to deal with this. So Brian, would you please grace us with your sage insights?
Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you for indulgence on taking, postponing the item so I could just speak to this. I guess as the teacher and Supervisor Bennett would say, this is a teachable moment, and let me just, first of all, commend staff for the creativity and the way that they have handled this and the way they deal with our public funds. I mean, this is an opportunity to partner, obviously, and try to do the best they can for the taxpayers. But let me connect the dots just a little bit further, and that is that while we have a number of debris basins throughout our county, and Watershed Protection District does a great job in managing those, in 2006, they did, we had a huge, the whole watershed let go of incredible amounts of sediment. They had to get the sediment out quickly. They did a very creative deal with real estate and, I think, of getting the sediment out of the basin so it could be there if something else happened. But that sediment, if that basin wasn't there, that sediment would have ended up down in the beach. That would end the creeks. It would finally its way down to the beach and would keep re-nurturing the beaches. Let me just tell you a couple of projects that we're struggling to find materials for right now, and the amount of money it's costing the taxpayers in all of our districts. Up at the top of Ventura, the Fairgrounds is a project that we've been working on for almost twelve years, managed retreat as the ocean's been eating it away. We just spent what we thought was a very good deal. Originally, we were looking at two million dollars, but with the deal with the Corps of Engineers and some folks out in Santa Paula, we were able to engineer, again, because construction costs and demand, and originally thought it was going to be two million dollars, but we procured an amount of cobble, which we need to help as a building block of the beach. We spent almost six hundred thousand dollars just to get that amount of cobble and have it stored, so when we start redoing the beach, that's available. Also, we need to go out and get beach quality sand, and there's very limited amounts of that, and it has to meet certain grain sizes and all these different things. So these debris basins have collected these materials, and we have stopped that from getting to the coast. So while we're saving the taxpayers in one instance, we're struggling to find money in other instances and other pots to make those connections to buy those materials, to deliver them to the beach. So, and the quandary comes up, and I thought, well, great, it's public sediment, so who's going to come up with the money to transport that sediment from, say, Cayegus Creek to Port Weneme or to an Oxnard receiving site, or even up to the site at Surfers Point, where it could be. So the question comes up is how do we manage that, and where do we find that? And that's what Beacon's struggling with, because when we strictly take public dollars, we say, well, we're saving the taxpayers money, but we've got to find the money to transport it. One of the things I would, so just trying to make that connection that the debris basins connect to the, we've stopped it, and this flow's not getting there. Beacon's big push over the next few years in Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties is we're going to try to figure out some way and some mechanism that could find some funding so that that could, that debris, they call it debris, I call it beach quality sand. If you're a homeowner on the beach, you're praying to get this sea ridge. That needs to, we need to come up with a mechanism to do that. So we're trying to be creative. We'll be coming back. Your board members, as members of Beacon, will be coming back to bring that to you. But in this, let me just examine this case here, and so in looking at it, I thought, again, with the trust nearby, they're able to store the materials. My concern would be in the future, when we go into something like this, where we split, where the receiver, the private property owner's receiving it and storing it, we're saying, gee, when we sell it, we'll split it with you. And that's fine. It's really, we're not getting anything for it now, where we're making a million dollars on it. But the bottom line is, in this case, we said that we'll split it with the private, with the owner, and I just want to make sure if we try to do this deal again, perhaps if there's a public use, that we won't be buying, if there's a public use and we're able to get that transport, and we're able to say get the debris for free, so-called debris for free, that we would not have to pay perhaps the property owner, and maybe just because it's the public's good in some way, shape, or form. So again, I think staff's done a wonderful job from the real estate to the Watershed Protection District in crafting something here, but just in the future, maybe give some consideration to not really boxing ourselves in and being stuck and saying, well, that's great, but because of this clause, we won't be able to, we have to sell it now because we've entered into something like this. So I wanted, thank you for the opportunity, and just get that on your radar screen. You'll be hearing more about the project at Surfers Point in the future, because it's actually being put up as one of the national models on how to deal with both sea level rise but also coastal erosion, which is a huge problem. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
I want to thank you, Brian, for, Brian does an excellent job for us at Beacon, you know, the JPA between Ventura County and Santa Barbara. One of the things I do want to share here, even though we hope that we got to gotten that material for, to help Beacon, but they saved a tremendous amount of money here, which I think should be pointed out. I think nine point three million dollars, and then another six million dollars, you know, in savings from moving this dirt from point A to point B. But one of the things that Beacon is working on is, for example, the erosion over at Galita. It's tremendous, you know, the erosion, Carpinteria, the cobblestone in Ventura, the tremendous amount of sand that we have in Oxnard shores, we've got to move to another location. So those are the things that we're working on that are good projects.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that the Watershed Protection District, back in year 2000 with Alex today, and did a project at Santa Ana River, and moved that cobble actually to the beach and put it at the beach. So that was the first time that ever happened anywhere. And so, and again, they were fortunate that they had the cobble and they had the trucks and were able, had a little bit of a budget to do that. And so somehow, we might be able to work that out. In this case, I would just want to say there was seventy-two thousand dollars for perhaps non-performance. Perhaps that seventy, some of that seventy-two could have been used for transport. So just want to say in the future, perhaps something like this can be factored.
And I think, Brian, Madam Chair, I think we ought to bring a Beacon report to the board, you know, on what we're doing, and so that the board can understand and the public can understand the JPA between Santa Barbara and Ventura County.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great suggestion. Supervisor Troy?
I don't know from the standpoint of both these together, when we know we're going to clean something out, I agree with you, this, we shouldn't just be depositing, we should do it one time, because did we transport to this property, originally we paid to transport it?
We did, and it's immediately adjacent to the creek, so.
Oh, it was close. Oh, it was a simple transport then.
Right. So, and we're just looking at another four to six bucks a yard to take it to Port Weneme or the disposal site. There's actually a disposal site, not a disposal site, a handling site close to the Surfers Point that we talked with them about taking it to.
So would, based on the amount of material that's coming out of the four to six yards transport cost, would that have covered on the one hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Oh, not even close.
How many yards you transported?
We had, in that pile originally, we had something close to six hundred thousand yards, and we've been whittling away at it. So this one hundred and twenty-five thousand yards is just a fraction of the pile.
And most of the stuff you take out of these is usually local places, close to the place where you take them out of the debris basins to dump it?
Yeah, well, that's not always the case. Most of the time, we turn the stuff over to the contractor, let the contractor do what they want with it, because we generally get better prices that way.
Right.
In this particular instance, there was a number of things going on around the county. There was no place to take the material, so we worked a different deal.
Which is number now, which is an advantage for what you're talking about now, if you can find the money.
Exactly. That's the missing number, and we're going to have to come up with some creative mechanism, because while we're saving on this end, we're spending a fortune on the other side. It's only going to get even more, so.
Right.
Just wanted to help you connect the dots, and the staff's fabulous about trying to do that. We're just going to have to, as policymakers over time, come up with some mechanism, because the truth of the matter is, we're not fracturing the whole cost of sediment being interrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. I know our CEO has a comment also, but I just want to let Butch Britt know that we're going to go to the nine thirty first before his item, if he wants to do other things and be sitting here in the boardroom. Ms. Robinson, I almost called you supervisor.
No, thank you.
Not you.
I just wanted to mention to the supervisors that the Beacon, I think the reference should be the original Beacon, because this was the original Beacon that was created way back with Jerry Nowak, and it was, the focus has been on beach erosion control. The name has been usurped in more recent years.
Okay. With that then, do we have a motion?
Who's the recommended action?
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
And a second, great. Must be a historic time. There we go.
Madam Chair, do you want to do the other one very quickly?
And what I'd like to do is go to the nine thirty time certain, and I'm going to step away for a moment and turn it over to Supervisor Zaragoza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's really an honor for me today to honor this young students from Oxnard High School. You know, they were the winners of the academic decathlon and the mock trial competition in Ventura County, and it's just wonderful to see them here today, and also to commend the coaches, the teachers, and the principal of Oxnard High School. I'm very proud to be from Oxnard. I was a yellow jacket just a few years ago. Don't be laughing, guys. My wife was a yellow jacket too, and born and raised in Ventura County. I've lived in Oxnard all my life, you know, and I think that the kids here in Ventura County are excellent kids, excellent young adults, and it's a great place to raise a family, to own a business, and to live here. One of the things that I like to focus on before I read my accommodation or resolution that I have for the young adults here, it's unfortunate that in the media, we always hear about the wrong things that the children are doing, that our youth are doing, and often we don't hear enough of the good things that are happening in our community. And I've said it in the past, and I'll say it again, that ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the children, our youth, our young adults, our new leaders, are excellent students, and you're here to prove that today. And I know it's tough in this rapid change and challenging times. It's not easy to do the good things that you're doing, so I want to commend you for that. At this time, what I'd like to do is invite the Akadaca team and the mock team to come up to the podium, and also the, and I'd like to read a accommodation, a resolution to you, and if you can come up to the podium, and then after I read the accommodations and the resolutions, maybe we can, maybe the principal or one of the students can share some of their experiences. So what I'd like to do at this time is read a resolution. This is going to be for the academic decathlon team, and if they can come forward up to the dais. And this is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors, County of Ventura. Honors and commends Oxnard High School Yellow Jackets 2010 for the academic decathlon team for their first-place win of Ventura County Academic Decathlon Competition, whereas the Ventura County Academic Decathlon Program promotes and recognizes learning achievement by emphasizing the value of academic excellence in all students. Whereas students participate in the academic decathlon competition in ten topics, including seven multiple-choice tests, art, economics, language, literature, mathematics, music, science, and including an essay and a speech and interview event and a super quiz, whereas the Oxnard High School has been successful participants in the past decathlon competition, placing second in 2007 and 2008 for Ventura County, followed by the invitation to both those years to the state finals. I'd like to name some of the individuals right at this time, the academic decathlon A team, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your names. First person is Danielle Benucci, Diane Krill, Sarah Watt, Caitlin Genji, is that correct? Good. Natalie Luna, Karen Watson, Matthew Genji. All right, good. Brendan Nguyen, there he is. Jennifer Oakley. Okay, all these individuals, and I hope I didn't miss anyone, are really committed to a rigorous schedule, a study of academic decathlon exams, practicing speeches, interviews, essays for countless of hours. That's my understanding that you were really working on this. Whereas the teachers, the coach, Chris Conti, where's Chris Conti? Right behind, there he is. An assistant, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, Amana Hassan.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. Also committed to a similar schedule of study session and speech and interview practices. Whereas Oxnard High School, James Edwards is the principal, and his staff has strongly supported the academic decathlon team, the mock trial team, and other academic exam programs at Oxnard High School, whereas in 2010, Oxnard High School Academic A Team was the first-place winner in the Ventura County Academic Decathlon Competition, and whereas in 2010, Oxnard High School Academic Decathlon Team brought great honor and pride to Oxnard High School and to the entire community of Ventura County. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pride in honoring and commending the 2010 Oxnard High School Academic Decathlon and their coaches for their outstanding efforts and accomplishments, and wishes them a great success in future endeavors. And this is signed on today's date. Thank you so much. Now, I would like to call, I'd like to call the other team, the mock trial team, and you guys can stand there, because someone will go down there, and we're going to give you some individual accommodations. Let's have the mock trial team stand on this side. And again, this is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors, County of Ventura, and this honors and commends the Oxnard High School Yellow Jackets, 2010 Yellow Jackets Mock Trial Team for their first-place win at the Ventura County Mock Trial Competition, whereas Ventura County Mock Trial brings together teachers and legal professionals to help students acquire working knowledge of the judicial court system in the United States. In return, our youth gain deeper understanding of citizenship, the values expressed in our Constitution, and also in the Bill of Rights, whereas in 2008 and 2009, Oxnard High School Mock Trial Team participated in the finalists at Ventura County Mock Trial Competition, whereas this year, on February 25th, 2010, the Oxnard High School Mock Trial Team took first place, first place, congratulations on that, giving the mock trial team a short seat in the state finals in San Jose, where they probably competed or will compete in the state mock trial competition. Competition, whereas Oxnard High School Mock Trial Students portray each other in the principal characters of a courtroom during competition, and the following defense attorneys were Irene Deng, there she is, Diane Krill, okay, Sarah Maxwell, okay, prosecution attorneys, and no law attorneys looking at all those young kids already, Marissa Winsky, okay, and also Nicole Cole. Okay, and also Azeritar, okay, and defense, defense witnesses, Drew Thomas, and also Natalie Mabu-Balat, Mabu-Balat? Okay, Patricia Corio, Katie Rice, the prosecution witnesses were Roy Agrelo, Roy is not here, Garrett Numan, okay, and Chantel Lewis, okay, and Arianna Gillum? No? Okay. The bailiff was Ricardo Hotecko, and the timekeeper and clerk was John Yaw. All right. Whereas all the students committed to a rigorous schedule of 80 hours of trial practice and training, were English instructor Keith Cook, and the team's faculty advisor, Ventura County Legal Attorneys Tom Dunlevy, and also David Russell, and also Victor Solis, not here, and Beth Thomas, committed to a similar schedule and to assist and volunteer their time to coach Oxnard High School Mock Trial Students. Whereas Oxnard High School, James Edwards and his staff, he's the principal, staff supported the Mock Trial Team and Academic Decathlon Team and other academic exam programs, and where Oxnard High School Mock Trial Team brought great honor, and I want to say great honor, to Oxnard High School and, and the community and Ventura County. Now therefore, let it be resolved, Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pride in honoring and commending the 2010 Oxnard School Mock Trial Team and coaches for their outstanding efforts and their accomplishments, and wishes them great success in future academic endeavors. And I'd like to go down and, and share this with you, and, and if, I'd like to say something after we, we commend, we give you this accommodations, be happy to, to entertain, if you'd like, a, probably a word or two from you folks. Thank you. Let me, I'll go.
The Board members too, and the public, we also have individual accommodations for all the youth here, so Lou just is going to pass them out, you know, and I hope we give them to the right, if we hand them out and give it to the wrong person, please send it to the right person, and this is individual accommodations, and the resolutions are for the, for your school and your team. Would you like to say something? You're the Vice Principal, Mito?
Yes.
Welcome.
Yes, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Edwards, he was at a previous engagement, so, my name is Tom Mito, I'm Assistant Principal at Oxnard High School. Supervisors Zaragosa, distinguished members of the Board, thank you for taking time to commend our excellent programs here. It's, I just want to take a few minutes, not to take their time, we just underscore their, their time requirement and the effort they put in. Talking to one of the academic decathlon athletes and asked them what the time requirement was, they said they put about four hours in a day, it was two hours with the team and two hours on their own. I was here a couple Saturdays working at Oxnard High School, and I saw the, the Mock Trial Team working there, they were probably there at least seven or eight hours working in one of the classrooms, so I know the commitment's huge, and what makes it even more special is that a lot of our, our members here are on drama, they're in, they're athletes, they're participating in other extracurricular activities, plus they're taking advanced placement classes, which is, you know, at least two, three hours of studies a night per class, so I don't know where they find the time and energy, but I'm sure I'm glad they do, because not only have they inspired our school, our school district, City of Oxnard, I think it's, is very proud of them, I think it helped to galvanize the people behind them, and it's, it's an inspiration to everybody. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything else, somebody? We've elected to say a few words.
We need the attorneys to come up to you. Okay.
Hello, my name is Irene, and on behalf of the Mock Trial Team, we'd like to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for all the support, and we'd also like to thank all the parents and the coaches that have given us great support, we couldn't have done it without them. This is truly, truly a great experience, I mean, I remember when we went to the competition, we were just hoping just to make finals, and when they were calling out the names, we were just, you know, gripping each other's hands, we're like, oh, they called third place, and second, and first place we got, and I think this is the first time in Oxnard High School history where we actually placed first, and speaking for all the seniors, this is just a great way to end senior year, and we put in a lot of hard work and time, and this is just an amazing experience, and we really thank you for all the support.
And again, I want to thank you and thank the parents, I did thank the parents when they came by, you know, but I, when I mentioned the, the resolution, but I want to thank you again, and I think to the Board of Supervisors and also to the public, we're in good hands. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Zaragosa? Supervisor Zaragosa, if, if I could, I, I had, had the pleasure of teaching 22 years at Nordoff High School, I was the Academic Decathlon Coach at Nordoff High School, we were fortunate enough one year to just win the Mock Trial, not, 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 not the whole, I mean, not the Mock Trial, the super quiz, but not, not the whole event, and then many times I went down and watched our Nordoff Team compete in the Mock Trial, and there are just two points that I would like to make. It is impossible for us to, to understand how much extra time these students and these coaches and advisors put into this, I mean, it is truly a passion of love to, to go after it and go after it, but I thought you captured it so well, I mean, what a memory to have for the rest of your life, and I hope you'll go out and inspire your younger brothers and sisters and your friends' younger brothers and sisters, that this is the way to maximize your experience in high school, that it is so easy to sort of cut corners and pass up these things because they take too much time, and it's just the opposite, it is getting involved in these things that, that really makes it happen. And the other thing I'd like to point out is, I think we can rightfully say that at least for a year, the seat of academic power and prestige has shifted to Western Ventura County, and, and we're going to, we're going to fight hard to keep it over here on our side of the grade with great people like Oxnard, and to have it be Oxnard pulling it back over here is, I think, just wonderful and, and a great comment upon, about where we're going as a society, and so thank you all very much, you have inspired me and lots of other people here in Western Ventura County. Keep it up, don't stop inspiring people, that's what you're going to need to do for all of us. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Excuse me, I think we also have an academic student, would you say something?
Hi. Yeah. Got two here, so I'm quite busy myself. My name's Diane Krill. You didn't find out what I'm pronouncing today. All I can say is, thank you guys for all your support, and thanks to all the schools, I mean, this has been one heck of an experience, just so much sacrifice, because all the time and dedication that went into it. Everybody thinks with Acadaca, it's, you have to be smart, because there's 10 different subjects, it's, it's not at all about being smart, it's about how much time are you willing to give, and I think, I'm, I think I was speaking for my team when I said that this year, we really wanted to give it all we could, because we knew we could at least finally get county, and I, I want to thank these guys right here, they've become like my pseudo-family right here, and that's my pseudo-sister, pseudo-brother. He's not shy at all, no. And we also, I know, I would like to thank my parents for helping support, and I think these guys want to thank their family as well, and it's been unreal, doing 10 different subjects, going crazy, I think I'm insane, but that's okay. Depends on who you talk to, but, so again, I just wanted to thank you guys for all your support, and being here really means a lot to, I know, each of us, to say that, heck yeah, we finally won.
Congratulations, I'm so happy for you all. I had children that went through Westlake High School's Mock Trial Team, and just watching that excitement, all the parents in the room, just, you know, pushing for their kids, and what pressure you're under, and, and having the support of the justices, you know, isn't that wonderful to have real judges there that are helping you go through this? I just think it's a wonderful program, and it certainly is going to help you all in, hopefully with your college applications. Everybody here is going on to college, right?
I don't think so.
I'm so happy for you all, we look forward to hearing some good things about you as you go through your college and get into your careers and become future leaders of tomorrow, so, excellent work. Want to speak, Mike?
Yes, please. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of you, how exciting to invest yourself into something that takes a lot of effort and to accomplish it, I think that's probably the best lesson that you're going to learn in this endeavor, but congratulations to all of you, thank you for the effort.
Let me just say that as supervisors, we get the opportunity to represent the county, and it's always great when you get to go out and speak and talk to people about all the wonderful things you see, and this is some of the great things you see, the young people making a difference, and what you're going to do in your lives and what you've done for your school is tremendous. Like you said, first time we've won, I think, is what we've heard, first place, I mean, that, that's tremendous, how many schools, how many people have competed, all the hours put in, and you won, because you were willing to work that much harder.
And beat Lorena.
Yeah. Yeah. And so anyway, I, I'm just, I'm just proud to be able to go out and tell people what, what we saw today, so thanks for making the time to come down and show us the people that are really making a difference out there, so thanks a lot, guys, it was great, it's great, thank you.
Thank you again, you know, on behalf of the Fifth District and the people of Oxnard and, and the County of Ventura, and I think we'd like to take a photo, get all the folks on this side, so we can take a photo from that end, so can you move her on this way?
I also have one more thing to say, our Mock Trial Team placed 15th in state, and also our Ventura County Artist got first place in the state, so her picture's going to be featured on next year's Mock Trial cover, and it's actually of me and this girl right here, so we'll be representing the state in some sort of way, but I wanted to add that out there.
Would you say something?
Okay. Um, okay.
Well, thank you so much. Look, you want to turn this way, so we can take some?
if you'd like to come up to the podium? I believe it was 2 minutes and 31 seconds.
2:31.
It was 2:30, and then we gave you the extra second.
All right, any way you want to word it.
She'll let you read one of the end.
Madam Chair, a point of order, I videotaped this board conducting a meeting without a quorum. Supervisor Bennett left, Supervisor Parks left, Supervisor Foy left, the only supervisor setting, that's a violation of the Brown Act, and this meeting cannot proceed, there's a procedure in the Brown Act, it's on video, and I raised that point of order from the chair, what are you going to do? Silence.
I think you better use up all your 2 minutes and 31 seconds.
Silence is deadly. Well, I know at least one of those students five years ago was in courtroom 25. Courtroom 25, four years ago, the Oxnard School District filled up the courtroom. Page 234, Judge Purnell, quote, "We've been joined by a group of Oxnard students on a court tour," unquote. Page 263, Judge Purnell, quote, "For the class visiting today, I won't have a chance to stop and speak to you today," unquote. He ran out of the courtroom. A mockery trial, students, you did a mock trial, look at Penal Code 19.6, which prohibited a public defender, prohibited a public defender, students, you're outside, on page 228 of this court transcript, students, Russell Baker, Deputy Public Defender, quote, "It is clear by the prosecution, this case has been prosecuted. The fact of this prosecution is the result of years and years of Mr. Williams, Carol Dean Williams, going to the Board of Supervisor meetings," unquote. Certified Court Reporter Transcript. "I didn't know your authority extended to the judges, well, I did know it, but now it's the moment of truth. I will believe the truth no matter how it comes."
Thank you for your-
I will be going to the district attorney. Video evidence.
On this item?
Video evidence.
On our agenda, and, and we are able to hear the proceedings from the back room when we take a quick break. The item now that we'll go back to is item 22, and I think we have missed Fleisch here. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Ms. Robinson, for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch, I'm the new Transportation Director for Ventura County. You have before you this morning the approval and authorization for modification to two service contracts for the Lewis Road Widening Project. It's fairly straightforward, the board, board letter, I think, articulates fairly, fairly clearly what it is that we're, we're asking for approval on, it's again, it's an extension of the funding for those two project, or those two consulting contracts. We've extended the length of those contracts about two months due to difficulties both with Caltrans and with the railroad, and that is what's causing us to require the additional funding.
Are there any questions on this item?
Just somehow it's easier to vote on them when Chris Crinkle is here, you know, talking about stuff.
Where is he?
Doesn't have your back. Oh, there he is. Okay.
But I can adjust, so I'm, I'm getting ready.
And a second, and if the Board could please vote, that item passes unanimously, thank you very much, thank you for the report, well done. Our next item is item 23, and this is regarding our final track.
We postponed that to April 6.
Oh, that's right, that was for, so 24 is our last regular agenda item with the Sheriff's Department, and then we'll go to our 10 o'clock time certain.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair and fellow Board members, I sense a little bit of east-west friendly competitiveness at the Board in several items today, I'm a little torn where I live and where I work, so I'm going to stay in the middle and present something as countywide. I'm asking for your authorization to ratify and accept the Drug, Anti-Drug Abuse Recovery Act Program Grant and the- of this task force for all participating members. And I'd like to add that the VCLT group with the sheriff and all the chiefs of police and the County of Ventura that oversee how these funds and how this task force is administered, we've added behavioral health rep, Patrick Zarotti, and it's been very helpful for him to see what's on the front end of our narcotics problem, of these trends and what we're facing, for how he faces it in behavioral health. He's been a value-added member. And if you have any other questions?
Do we have any questions on this item?
Go quick. This new senior deputy is moving somebody into this position from what you already have.
It's a new position and it's focusing on technologies and surveillance equipment. Unlike the Highway Patrol that stands on the side of the freeway, this acts as our ability to hide and capture criminal elements that's involved in smuggling in our county. So it is a new position. It's fixed term for two years as long as we can fund the position grant.
Okay. Sounds great.
Okay, we have a motion. Thank you for the report.
Good hustling on this grant, and I sure hope it pays off in terms of big dividends for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then we do have another item on our regular agenda, which is the addendum agenda item. And this is item number 26 with the healthcare agency, something in $1,000.
I'm the only one from the behavioral health department. Good morning. Item 26 requests your approval for two recommendations. The first is to submit an application on behalf of Many Mansions to the CalHFA to construct a Hillcrest project, which is going to set aside 15 of 60 units for MHSA-eligible households. The second recommendation is for the behavioral health department to sign an MOU with Many Mansions for the department to provide supportive services to the Hillcrest project. This is really exciting for us. Again, we're creating housing for the mentally ill, and this is an MHSA-funded program. And just, it was really interesting when I was up at CMHDA recently, I heard that other counties are having trouble accessing these funds because they don't have the housing partners we do or don't have the expertise within their departments to be able to do all of the paperwork and all of the associated work in order to access these funds. And we've done really well accessing these funds. So we've done, I think, a good job in Ventura of using this funding to create housing for the mentally ill. Do you have any questions?
I just want to add to that how fortunate we are to have a project and a place ready to go for these funds because so often it's difficult to find housing, affordable housing, but even particularly more difficult when it's affordable housing for people with mental illness. And to have all those services available is key. And Many Mansions has a wonderful track record of managing units and being able to get these units built. And it's so essential now, I think, particularly with this economy. So I'm really delighted to see this. Obviously, there is a need throughout the county. And as we get more places, locations, that's the key, finding locations and the funding stream, we'll be able to get some more where they're more needed, I think, in, for example, the Oxnard area. But we don't want to pass up this opportunity. And I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve. And hopefully, more sites will become available. Thank you. That motion does pass also 5-0. We have the correspondence agenda that we have yet to approve, so can we move to that? We have a motion and a second for the correspondence agenda. And please vote. Now we can go on to item...
Oh, beach.
Okay, now we can go on to item, our 10 o'clock time certain item. That's item 14, and this is regarding our wildfire protection plans.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of board, Ms. Robinson, Bob Roper, Fire Chief, Fire Protection District. This morning, I'm asking your approval to ask the board chair and myself to sign the Community Wildfire Protection Plan before you. This is a document that was created by the Ojai Fire Safe Council, and I have their executive director, Will Castagna, here today in the room, as well as Captain Brendan Ripley, who is instrumental on our staff in providing all the documentation and so forth behind it. In 2003, Congress passed the Healthy Forest Restoration Act. And part of this was, is their realization at the federal level that the wildfire problem in this country is not going to be resolved by the federals alone. They had the idea that we might want to talk to the locals because whatever happens is really a local issue and it brings in the feds. During that process, they identified 6,312 communities at risk that are located in the wildland fire arena. Since that time, that number has probably increased about at least 30-fold as far as identified communities that are in harm's way. For Ventura County, it's pretty much all of Ventura County except Wayneimi and Oxnard, who have the beauty of the beaches and stuff. But the rest of the county is, really deals with the hazardous wildland areas. What we really want to do is, in this report, is we wanted to bring in a collaborative process where we had a series of meetings that we asked different people from throughout the county to come in and talk about the wildland issues. The Ojai Fire Safe Council is instrumental in hosting those at our facility to build a collaborative process so that we got everybody to talk about the goods, the bads, how they can be part of the solution. The overall emphasis is how do we reduce our wildland fire suppression cost? And how do we make up better, healthier communities that we live in? So with that, we looked at several key projects that especially the Ojai Fire Safe Council has worked on. One is fuels projects where they go in and they eliminated some of the fuels, put in defense breaks for us, they've conducted public education programs at the local high school. And also, we have a wildland fire expo within the community. People can come in and learn what tools can they build, buy to protect their homes themselves, as well as a new one that we're working with the Ojai Fire Safe Council on bringing the CERT program into part of the public education on helping those people who can't help themselves that are special needs and so forth during a wildland fire. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd just like to introduce Will again and ask him just to say a few words.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Chief Roper. I just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you to all of you who have either directly or indirectly supported the Fire Safe Council over the years. We've had the opportunity to serve in Ventura County, especially in the Ojai area, since 2000. And one of the hallmarks of what we've been able to achieve has been community participation and cooperation. The, one of the main reasons that Fire Safe Councils exist is to serve as an independent entity that's not a city agency, it's not a county agency, it's independent so that we can bring together the community and all of the stakeholders in the community to help them accomplish what needs to be accomplished in order to create safety in the event of a wildfire. And we're very excited to finally be complete with this process. The CWPP process has been a long one for us, and we're excited that it's complete because now it opens the door for grant applications and for other Fire Safe Councils to begin to do their work within the county as well. So I just wanted to extend my thanks especially to Brendan and Chief Roper and the help that we've received from County Fire that was invaluable in bringing this CWPP to fruition. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Supervisor Bennett, I was wondering if, did you have any comments on this? I was just talking about the, how important the Fire Safe Councils are and what a great partnership it is. You know, it's a completely citizen-run organization, but being able to tap into some really good grant funds to be able to do this. And I just really laud your department, Chief Roper, for being able to bring this together. So thank you for that.
Well, certainly representing Ojai, and I know Chief Roper knows, we have our annual scare in Ojai. And, you know, for people to come together in Ojai, for Bob to do a great job of pulling people together from Ojai is, it's been a long tradition in terms of paying attention, but this has been a particularly effective effort. And all of us in the Ojai Valley are going to be better off as a result of this effort by the Fire Department, but also by you stepping forward and the rest of the Fire Safe Council members and stuff. So I certainly really appreciate it, and I know the citizens of the Ojai Valley really appreciate it at this point in time. It's been, it's been a oft-talked-about in terms of, I remember when the crew first began and we were at a statewide conference and people said, "Ojai, oh, you guys are the leaders in doing this." And because of the geography of Ojai, we need to be the leaders in terms of doing that. So thank you very much, Chief Roper, and thank you very much for your leadership here in terms of trying to make this thing happen.
Thank you. And I also appreciate that you worked with the Venti Park Fire Safe Council too, so they got their requests in too. So good job. Thank you, and I hope we'll be successful here.
I'm glad you didn't have to work with Oxnard and, because we have the beaches out there in Wayneimi. Thank you so much. Good job.
All right. We do have a motion and a second, and that item is approved. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I believe we have about 15 minutes available until we go to our 10:30 time certain. And we continue the 10:30, so actually, we have, we can go right to closed session and then go ahead and adjourn from closed session. Is that right? Great. All right. We'll have a quick meeting here. And with that, I'll ask our county council if there will be any announcements from that closed session.
There will likely be one announcement.
One announcement. Okay. All right. With that, then we will have to come back to the dais here to have that announcement and adjourn from the dais then. And we're back into session after our closed session. We have an announcement from our county council, Noel Claybon.
On item 17 on the agenda, in the Ventura County Superior Court case of County of Ventura versus Tatiana Winnyars, by a vote of four to zero, the Board of Supervisors ratified the filing of a petition against Tatiana Winnyars for an injunction prohibiting violence against a nursing assistant employed by the county. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will close and adjourn from our closed session.